I will call this meeting to order, the Board of Health in here in Millville at seven o'clock PM on January 4th, 2022. So taking the agenda in order, Peter, any announcements of correspondence?
No, neither, nothing on either of those, it's not covered in the agenda, basically.
Okay. Um, so minutes. I've printed, as I was saying, I've printed up many, many sections of minutes. I went over them fairly thoroughly, I didn't see any updates needed. Except in the November 15th minutes. On page four, no, five. Um, on the reports, so it said there was a complaint from a citizen about a streetlight aimed toward their house. And I just changed it to, from a citizen about a streetlight turned on in front of their home, sorry, I said aimed toward their home. I said turned on in front of their home, because it's not aimed at her house, it's just on. We're not spotlighting any homes in Millville with streetlights. But that's the only thing I saw. Andrew, you're my eagle eye editor, did you see anything?
Um, yeah, there are a few things, so for the November 1st minutes, I'll start with those. As I think, what were the other minutes? The October 20th were fine, but the, so those, I had nothing on, but for November 1st on page two. It was just a small typo, it says om, like OM, I'm pretty sure it just meant on, but just a thing I had noticed.
November 11?
Sorry, what?
Which article is that?
Uh, that is on page two, let me bring up the minutes, look at them.
The fine articles are presented on warrants. Blah, blah, blah.
Oh yeah, I got it, the bottom, yep, article five, six and seven.
Yep, there is two, um, yep. Um, and then on page three of November 1st. It was on
Page two of November 15th?
Sorry, what? No, 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 November 1st.
Oh, so November 1st, okay.
Yeah, page three of November 1st. Um. It was under Sorry, I'm just trying to find it. Okay, so it's on the first section under the article eight, senior center van. Um, it's the second third sentence, I believe. Um, starting with the grant requires that the town needs to know that the, know the town has put aside the money. Or the 20% of the money. Uh, that didn't make much sense to me, I think it was the state needed to know.
Yeah, that the state needs to know.
Yeah, okay.
Let me change that. Yep.
And and then I would have one thing put in for that one as well, just as my personal sake. Um, that there was a question of whether or not there was an analysis um, of any sort for the article.
We need to do that.
Yep, um, so I would like that to be reflected as well as the fact that um, this one and I believe the highway departments shed, shed salt, shed storage. Um, were both done quickly and I did make comments, but I would like those having to be reflected in the minutes as well.
Okay.
Um. And then on page four, um. We, under public forum, um, it just has a resident question, but it doesn't really have any of the explanation that was given or any response. Maybe thought that might be helpful to put in the minutes.
Hmm.
Um. Just to kind of make it clear as to what went on.
Yeah, I do remember that question, actually, it was that the budget was no longer balanced or something like that, yeah.
Yeah, it was mainly like about the increases, some of the budgets. Um, so I think that might just need to be a little flushed out more, just to clarify it and make it a little more complete. Um. And then there weren't any signature sheet, sheets for most of
I know they didn't all have signature pages, which I just signed the last page, I think that's fine.
Yeah, yeah, I wasn't sure if that was required or whatever, it's not that big a thing, I don't think, but just a
We should have one for all the meeting minutes, but I don't want to delay publishing them any longer, just for that.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine, um, and then for the November 15th ones, um, it does this at a couple places where it says there's unanimous vote. But then it lists the votes and one of them was nay. So that needs to just be changed to not being unanimous, but a majority. Um, and then that's all I have.
Yep. It's on the third page at the top.
There's a couple, it's article three, article four, article eight.
Article eight, yeah, um. Article nine, there's article 10, yeah, there's a couple of them, but so those just need to be adjusted, um, that's all.
Okay.
Yeah, you might have gotten the wrong file on that, because I changed those, but uh
Nope.
That's correct, but you're correct, it is written.
They're not in this packet.
Yep.
Okay, so why don't we then vote to approve the minutes from the 20th, 30th and 6th, October 20th, November 30th and December 6th, as is, and then Peter, can I like just line out, so on these copies, I just lined out the changes. And can I do that and we sign them? And post them, or do we need the secretary to go back and?
I can get your signature ones with the changes if you want, we'll do that, but you sign the last page, because I don't think yeah, so sign what you have with those lined out and we'll insert the correct
The right ones?
Yeah.
Okay, so I wrote it on all the minutes, okay, so then
Yep.
Why don't we do this, so let's
So that's what will be posted, yeah.
Okay. So I will make a motion and to approve, approve the meeting minutes for October 20th, November 30th and December 6th and authorize Jennifer Gill to sign those meeting minutes.
Second.
Thank you, Andrew. All those in favor? Hi.
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 Thank you, Todd, okay. And then I will make a motion to approve the meeting minutes on November 1st and 15th with the changes we discussed and to authorize Jennifer Gill to sign these meeting minutes. Looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Todd. All those in favor? Hi.
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 Okay, great. Um, okay. So yay, we caught up on meeting minutes today. Um, all right, so Board of Health, I don't see anyone here. So why don't we jump ahead for, to the town moderator and talk about the special town meeting, and I see we have Ms. Lima with us here tonight, Ms. Lima here with us tonight. So Jackie, over to you.
Good evening, everybody, um, so we are here because currently there is a special town meeting that has been delayed and is slated to happen tomorrow night at 7:00 PM at the Millville Elementary School. Um, it's my duty as moderator to figure out if it is safe conditions. Um, just to get everybody up to speed, we were supposed to do this 30 days ago, due to the, you know, prevalence of COVID in the area. We decided, uh, under the statute that authorizes the moderator to delay a town meeting for 30 days, that that would be in the best interest of the town. Fast forward 30 days and nobody would have thought COVID would have been worse than it was 30 days ago, but it seems that that is um, the case that we're currently finding ourselves in. So in terms of next steps here, unless anybody from the board feels otherwise. Um, I did speak today with the chairman of the Board of Health, Dustin Ciccarelli, who said, um, and I will quote him, uh, he said he hoped to be here tonight, but if not, I could, you know, relay his sentiments, and I believe his quote was, unless you're living under a rock, uh, you don't, you wouldn't want to come to a meeting tomorrow night. Um, so you know, again, he just really agreed with me in terms of the prevalence of COVID cases, uh, the, you know, positivity rates of the town, there was an email that I was copied on earlier today from the superintendent. Um, you know, noting the numbers of absenteeism at the school, uh, both in terms of students and staff. Um, that, you know, these numbers seem to be record high. Um, in terms of the cases that they're seeing in the school, as well as I don't have definitive numbers from Board of Health, but I would imagine um, the case count there is probably up higher than it was 30 days ago. Um, so there was a meeting, excuse me, there was an email that was sent about 5:53 tonight from Town Council. I'm not sure if you guys had the opportunity to review that. But it seems like he's actually advising at this time to take the responsibility to postpone uh, from the moderator and actually allow the Board of Selectmen to make a decision. Um. And I am completely fine with, uh, you know, kind of backing away and letting the Board of Selectmen take over the decision making. Um, based on the recommendation of Town Council, if that's how everybody's reading that email. Um. I don't know that I have anything else to comment, because this time it doesn't look, i- if we're going to follow the advice of the town's attorney, I don't know that it would be my call at this point, it would be my recommendation right now, um, that we uh, not meet tomorrow night. And going forward, what that looks like, whether you would like me to postpone for 30 days, or whether the board would like to take over and follow the advice of council. Um, I'd be seeking advice from you guys at this point.
Yeah, so Peter and I met and went over, you know, kind of the more pressing articles, like time sensitive articles around budgeting and things like that. And you know, with some Scotch tape and other things, we can kind of hold the budget together pretty well until the annual town meetings, we actually um, wanted to just, we think we can go without a town meeting. The special town meeting rather, and some of the other things, you know, and as I've mentioned here and, and um and many other meetings, the art, a lot of the articles, like I just like to keep the ball moving forward. So, um, and as I said, even in the Gill household, um, there's some debate over, you know, should we have these kind of articles on? Should they be at the annual town meeting and at the special town meeting? And so there are some articles that, you know, people, some people feel are fine on a special town meeting and other people think should really be only at the annual town meeting. So the only ones that were truly pressing were budget items and me and Peter, we can kind of make do without those increases. So I think we can move forward without the special town meeting. And the numbers are just getting higher and higher, and we had an email from Dr. DeFalcow that there were like 56 cases so far in January, and he sent it last night. So that was three days into January, not like so the numbers are just going up and up and up and I don't know that in 30 days, the wave will have subsided. Like if I knew in 30 days, things are going to calm down, then I would say, why don't we postpone, let's keep the business of the town moving forward. I'm all from, you know, executing. I just don't know that's the case, and instead of leaving people in limbo. I think it might be better just to not have the special town meeting. But Andrew and Todd, if you feel differently or have other opinions, you'll certainly would love to hear them.
No, I agree with that, um, especially since if we do another 30 days, it just gets closer and closer to the regular town meeting in any case. It kind of seems superfluous at that point, um, but especially with the way COVID's been going and all that. I don't think it would be advantageous for us to do it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm kind of in agreement with that also.
Great.
And I think the key, the key here, Madam Chair, was just that, um, council previously had advised, you know, you really could just continue, there was no methodology for, if you will, cancellation. Uh, but he's since taken a closer look and under the conditions has revised his opinion on things, so you know, at the end of his, his, his report to us, he said, it is my opinion, the board may decide to not go forward with tomorrow night's special town meeting and just let it effectively dissolve, no reason to take action to dissolve it. Um, when the date passes with no new date selected. And even if we're, we can't limp along until annual town meeting and some budget things do arise that are overly challenging, I think we can, I'm pretty sure we can, but to the extent we can't, one can always call a special town meeting.
Yeah.
You know, um, but I think we can get away without it, so I think his advice is, uh, you know, well taken here, as you all are coming around to it, it looks like.
Yeah, Peter, I think the line in his email too, that, you know, I reread and read again and tried to reread one more time is where he states, general law, general laws do not authorize a special town meeting to be canceled, but they do not specifically prohibit it. Under the current public health crisis, it is my opinion that the Board of Selectmen, preferably in concert with the moderator, may determine that it is not in the public interest and contrary to public safety can, to conduct the January 6th, 2022 special town meeting, and that it is not to be held. So, you know, I think that right there, he, you know, kind of addresses what his previous opinion was and says, you know, it doesn't really say that you can do it, but at the same time, it doesn't say you can't, and based on the current circumstances, anybody, you know, reasonably applying common sense would say, you know, this, this is a reason not, the COVID is a reason not to um, have the meeting tomorrow, so I thought it was just important to state that.
No, thank you, Jackie. And then, so we don't have to take any like vote or anything, it looks like we just kind of let the date pass and there will be no meeting tomorrow night, and then that's it, and it?
He is silent. I had viewed, uh, he's silent, uh, on that. But I think you'd be wise where the line is that, uh, if the, you know, Board of Selectmen determine, so that would, to me, I would read that your determination is done via a vote, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and he says, you know, kind of once the date passes, nobody's making motions and we don't have a quorum present and the date comes and goes. Um. So if, if there's not a quorum to vote on things, because the date comes and goes, then I guess it just kind of, I guess what his presumption is, is that it automatically would dissolve, because there's been no action taken.
Hmm.
So I think all you simply might do is just take a vote that says, you know, we, uh, move to not hold, uh, the January 5th special town meeting as scheduled and leave it at that.
Yeah, I think that would be important too, because at the end of the email, so in previous continuances, we've had to submit reports into the Attorney General's office. So I think he may have to do some follow up with the state as to why this wasn't held, so at least if there's an official Board of Selectmen vote, I think that would um, be included in the documentation.
So should we also say we'll not hold the meeting, special time meeting as scheduled on January 5th? Um, in the interest of public safety? Just to make it clear for the reason, okay. So. Andrew, you want to make the motion, or you? I just feel like I make all the motions.
Yeah, no, no, I was gonna make the motion, um, I just had a quick question. Do we know of any precedent of ever this type of situation happening to another town?
No, I think it's kind of happening hot off the presses, Andrew, I think last
We're history makers.
When this was happening last year, and I think this is kind of where council came up with his previous opinion. Um, there was a state of emergency in effect, right? Uh, the governor had declared that there was a state of emergency, there was some special legislation that was put together specific to town meetings, right? Because when this happened, it was prime annual town meeting time. Since then, those special legislative acts have all expired, the state of emergency has also expired. And so we're kind of in uncharted territory right now, because special town meetings are not mandatory, a town does not have to have a special town meeting. So the fact that we decided to have one in early November, and then we decided to postpone it, kind of, it, it's very a unique situation. Um, I know that there have been some in other towns, I'm on some moderator boards and follow what's happening. Some towns have actually adopted electronic voting mechanisms, um, so some people are, you know, doing, um, whether they're in their cars or doing, um, other opportunities, but I don't think that the special, I don't think that there's a lot of special town meetings happening right now. Um, I think our timing was just really unique.
Okay. Thank you, um, so I'll make the motion to, um, cancel the special town meeting for January 5th, 2022. Um, due to public health concerns.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Todd. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Great. All right.
I don't count, but I'll, I get to.
Thank you, Jackie, you count.
All right, thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Either if you need me to come in and do anything or sign anything, just let me know.
Okay, Jackie, thank you so much.
Thank you, have a good night. Okay. Um, I don't see anyone from the Board of Health, I don't know if we want to tackle anything here, Peter, I guess.
Well, so I did reach out to Sherry just to see where, you know, she thought he was coming, she did. Um, she just sent me some stuff here. Um, you know, obviously town meetings, no brainer, cancel, uh, they're, you know, under, so COVID-19 update, you know, uh, clearly, uh, things are wild and, uh, and, um, continuing to be, uh, hot and wild. Um, last week, the last couple of weeks, you know, the town did receive the, um, uh, thousand test items, two, 500 and some test kits. And those were distributed out pretty quickly prior to the holidays, uh, which was great, so people could test and, uh, you know, be sure they could get, uh, to, you know, family events or whatever, or travel. Um, the lucky ones who did get the test kits, there is, uh, right now looking at seeing if ARPA monies, we pretty sure ARPA monies can be used to purchase additional test kits when they become available. Uh, so efforts are being made in that regard, I think we're going to need to tighten up how those test kit distribution takes place, just to ensure there's, you know, enough to go around as much as possible to everybody. Um, so that's my COVID-19 update, uh, mask mandate policy discussion, I don't know what you want to say on that, except you know, the CDC keeps changing, even the rules tonight changed, I guess, from, you know, they had a five day and a, you know, you, after you tested, you could if you had no symptoms, you could go back, now there's, their rules are that they want you to test negative after the five days. Otherwise, you got another five days to go, so that's a new one, but there obviously aren't enough tests to go around, so that continues to evolve, but I think if in doubt, you know, cover your face is probably the, the wise thing to do. Um, number three, the consideration of continuation of the Millville state of emergency, you haven't, the state lifted their state of emergency. The town went into it very early on in the pandemic, hasn't lifted it, I would argue that you just take no action. Does that mean there's additional money for you, I, you know, for the town? It's unclear, but I think if nothing else, it's, uh, further supports the action you just took regarding the special town meeting, so I'd say no reason to lift anything that's currently in existence.
Um. I think we should leave it in place, just because it if we didn't lift it when the numbers were lower and now they're escalating, it would seem a counterintuitive action, in my opinion, so. And Andrew, Todd, if you disagree again, you know, just let me know, but I think.
Yeah, don't hesitate to interrupt me, I could keep chatting, now, on the nursing services change, you know, we'd been, the town had been using the town of Sutton in, uh, what in my view is a pretty expensive deal, they've gotten into a, uh, they've ended that arrangement. And the Board of Health has ended that arrangement and entered into a much more financially attractive and service oriented is how I would describe it, arrangement with the VNA of Milford. Um, so that change has taken place, I'm sure if Dustin were here, he could talk further about that. The last one, uh, refers to the mass AG has had an opioid settlement uh, thing going on, and they've requested their communities consider participating in it by signing up and agreeing to follow the terms and distribute whatever, whatever amounts are um, available to, uh, combat opioid problems in the community, it's unclear for, so far from what I have from Board of Health, whether we have that problem. I'm, I'm sure there may be some, and if it's in your family, it's horrible. Um, the amount of money that we get, based on my math, I think I sent you an email that you, you might refer to, which tries to summarize things, we get 4,800 bucks to spend over 18 years, or $265 a year. And we're obligated to agree to use any monies we receive through the settlement for the purposes of the settlement. And the settlement's a 585 page document that I didn't read, but I flipped through it and, uh, you know, nothing jumps out as to how we're supposed to use it, so we'd be committing to an unknown uh, action, so, uh, and it's unknown who would administer it and how that's paid for and so on, so my recommendation, subject to what the Board of Health wants to do, is, uh, to take no action to join this settlement. Um, and I think in my text I just got from Sherry, they're probably likely to be on board, uh, with that, taking no action.
Cause it was like $200 a year or something.
Yeah.
And I don't know how much work it would be to get that $200, and then I mean, I saw COVID testing kits, this is just an example, selling for like $23.99, so you could get eight kits for the $200, or, you know what I mean, like I just don't know what kind of.
Yeah, so I think the other part was, uh, I just learned, um, that it was extend, there was a signup deadline. Actually, January 2nd, uh, it now has been extended to January 26th. And so I think the burden of the final decision is on the Board of Health, whether they want to do something like this, so you, this is more to keep you alert to this and, uh.
If they think it's worthwhile, then certainly I would definitely leave it to their decision, it just seems like it, something for that amount of money, if there's a lot of paperwork and things like that, like what did you use it for and what it was requested for, how did you use it and prove to me that you used it for $200, seems like a lot of work. But I don't know that, so I agree. They can decide what's best.
Right. Yeah, they're meeting next week, okay, so.
Perfect.
Yep, so they'll be meeting before the deadline and they can take actions should they so choose.
Okay. Uh, Andrew and Todd, anything else on the Board of Health updates before I move on to 5C?
Nope. I am all set, thank you.
Perfect. Okay, so 5C, the BMR capital planning update and discussion, so um, Peter and I sit on the Capital Planning Committee for Millville, and we've gone to a couple of the BMR meetings, I don't know if any of you had gone to the ones that they held in early December and November. But they're putting forth this proposal to renovate the schools. When I first started going, I was kind of doing some back of the napkin math, I was like, oh, this doesn't look too bad. But my estimates were very wrong. And, um, basically, it seems like they're leaning towards one project, Peter, let me know if you disagree. Where they would renovate the middle school and make that like a K through six. And then significantly renovate the high school. And make that seven through 13, and grade 13 is for special needs children. The price tag for this whole thing is $97 million. Um, with a cost to Millville taxpayers of $650 annually, was that right, Peter? Something like that?
Yeah, it was somewhere in the neighborhood of 600 plus or minus 50 bucks, depending on how it works out.
Yeah, so.
Which is a 10% or more, you know, more than 10% increase in the tax bill for that.
Yeah. Um. And I guess from
Is that for 30 years?
Yes, $600 for 30 years.
Okay.
So they're, they're still having meetings, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
There's, so it's not their defined path.
Right, so that's kind of the project they're leaning towards. What they're looking for the towns to do is to approve a feasibility study, which would be in the neighborhood of $500,000, $500,000, maybe a little bit more. Um, where we would partner with the MSBCA, so that's who funded the hot water, the boiler project at the elementary school, so they elementary school. So they cover fifty-seven percent of that. So we would work with them on the feasibility study. They would help us determine what we wanna spend and things like that. Um, and see about, and this is necessary to get the reimbursement of whatever it is, the fifty-seven percent or sixty percent or whatever is that we would get. That number does include the reimbursement. So don't think, oh, so we'll get at least three hundred dollars. No, it's six hundred-ish dollars. So I guess I'm looking at nine figures. Do you know what I mean? It just seems like I was one, I would like to see if we could do kind of chunks of things, like can we do ten million and then, like, I was thinking, could we even cut it in half? Which is still fifty million dollars. And have half of that reimbursed. And then that would cut the Millville tax bill to three hundred dollars a year, which I think is a little bit more manageable. So I don't know. I mean, I don't think we need to really make any decisions tonight. This is, I'm just kinda giving you the information that um, Peter and I have. I'll get a copy of the presentation. I'm sure that's no problem for me to get to share with both of you, Andrew and Todd.
Is there a reason why they need this? I thought the regional agreement was to justify, um, classroom sizes and all of that. Why all of a sudden do we need to redo schools and?
Yeah, so if I, I have a slightly different takeaway, Jen. Um. So what started, and they've been working on this, that group, subgroup has been working on it for, uh, well over a year, a year and a half, I guess, right? And they first set out and got the consultant to evaluate each of the facilities in the district and the likely repair and or renovation type needs in the next fifteen to twenty years. And I think the number for that, which is not reimbursable by MSBA, is, uh, you know, on the order of sixty-plus million bucks. Not knowing the details, you know, one could go down the road of, you know, do you really need to do sixty million bucks and that sort of thing? So they, but in looking at that, they then said, well, what's a, a better avenue to pursue? And this is as Jen described, the, basically taking down half of the high school and rebuilding its more in accordance with current educational uh, building design, if you will, for high schools and middle schools and renovate the other half that they didn't tear down of the high school and do the other repairs uh, and renovations, uh, to put all the students in either the, you know, the K through five or six in the middles, the current middle school and the rest up at the high school. Returning the town-owned buildings back to the town. So that's, you know, there's the, there's some value of cost savings as well as what is the town, like, what could the town do of that? But in the short term, what I got, my takeaway was that they will be looking for a feasibility study once MSBA uh, buys into the process. But the first step in the process, I think, is is that they would do, I forget what they called it, but like an expression of interest of a particular project. So that's what they're trying to educate people on. I think they're still trying to define their messaging and make it more understandable. But it still is a big, big nut, which is, uh, you know, and there are other nuts that taxpayers in Millville are gonna be dealing with when it comes to Town Hall, Police Station, et cetera, et cetera. So um, there's a lot going on in the near, you know, in the next several years. The other piece, uh, in the short term, they do, they will be coming to the town at the next town meeting, I think, with an article for funding of some mitigation of asbestos in the high school that is, uh, under a two- or three-year project. They started the first part of the project that, that they paid for out of their existing E and D funds. And they're gonna look to, you know, the towns under a warrant article to pay their portion of each of the next two years mitigation. I think the the cost is approximately two hundred, two hundred and twenty-five grand total. So our piece would be the, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty-eight, thirty per- percent of that. So um, so that's, that's just sort of my take, which is a little long-winded, and I apologize.
No, that's okay. But Todd, to answer your question, like the, the regional agreement and why do we have to redo the buildings? So the labs and things like that in the high school have not been touched. A lot of those things are exactly as they were when the building was first built in nineteen seventy-two. For example, the boiler and heating system that's there is a same one that was there in nineteen seventy-two. So there are some, I agree that renovations need to be done. I just wanna make sure we present something that's affordable to people in Millville. And that they'll see value from. Um. And I just.
I agree that.
Million dollars is it?
Yeah, I agree that renovations need to be done. I mean, that's, that's a necessity, no matter what, which way you look at it.
Yeah.
But I also hear from parents in town that are saying that their AUP children are not getting the help that they need. And maybe there's a different way to spend money now that they have all of these buildings and all of this space, and it was supposed to allow closer, like, elementary kids were supposed to be all in the same building, and it was supposed to allow teachers to work together. And now it just seems like it's changing. It just doesn't make sense to me, but that's, that's just my opinion.
No, 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 that's fair. Um. And I think, no, I mean, those are good questions to ask, right? I thought the teachers were supposed to be close together. I think their purpose is spaced out right now because of COVID. Um, I think that's probably part of it. Um, I just had another thought, and that just ran around in my head. Oh, one of the things that the, at the means that you talk about not being able to meet the needs in AP is the older buildings. Like not having the right facilities to do teachings in the right kinds of classrooms. So then they had this presentation, they, where they put up the maps, the basic floor plans of the schools. And they had like, you know, these are meeting the current educational standards, these rooms are not. So there are um, rooms in every building, um, that are just not up to date with current educational standards to be able to provide the kind of education that kids need. And it could be the AP kids.
Yeah, no, I, I get that, but you can also renovate room by room. You don't have to renovate school by school. Like, it could be a, a, a lot cheaper if they're looking at different options.
Yeah. No, for sure.
Just, just my opinion.
No, no, I think, I mean, I mean, when I first, cause my first thought was like, oh, seventy million, if we get half, it's thirty-five, say thirty, a third of that is Millville's, that's eleven million. You do that over three years, that didn't seem so bad. But the next summer, when we went, and they're like, six hundred, the average increase. And I was like, oh, jeez, like, that's gonna be a lot for, like, some people really be like, I, I can't pay that. And I don't wanna put anyone in that position where they have to say that.
Right. And year over year, the school budget goes up. And it's always the same conversation about how is Millville gonna support this increase? And, I mean, this is just more to the increase that we were already looking at.
Yep. No, I agree. All right, so I'll, I'll try to go to the next meeting. I'm, I'm meeting with Matt on Friday, actually, Matt Aaron North. I also know that we had a little bit of a conversation and I'm looking to get something a little bit more consumable. Andrew, I don't know if you had any thoughts you wanted to share too?
I mean, there's a lot of things, but with the presentation the way it is right now, uh, it's not even worth going into the reasons. It's just a ridiculous proposal, to be honest. That's how I see it. I mean, I could go into the reasons why it's bad, but it's kind of just insulting that type of number.
Yeah, no, it's a big number. One of the things that, um, and the gentleman on the Finance Committee in Blackstone kept bringing this up around the capacity of the schools and saying, you know, capacity's been going down, but I'm assuming that they're planning for the schools to be like at eighty percent and allowing for a little bit of growth, or maybe eighty-five percent. And I don't know that that's true. So that's a question that I wanted to ask. Um. Is, you know, if you have a brand-new, you know, almost a brand-new school, there are kids who are gonna, you know, I don't wanna go to the other school outside of Millville. I wanna go to BMR. It's brand-new, it's all shiny. So are we accounting for that in any way? That there might, we might retain some additional students, and is that built into the capacity model?
One, one thing I would say as a counterpoint is that the national average for America and for the state of Massachusetts and all those trends, the birth rates continually going down. And it does not look like it's gonna be going up. So to plan to have more students or have even the same amount of students we have now is kind of wishful thinking. We're not gonna have any baby booms in the next twenty years.
Yeah, yeah. No, I know. Um, but if you look at and I think, um, Steve Tringali on the Capital Planning Committee actually made this point. If you look at where school kids are going, a lot of them are choicing out. So even if you, if you had a better school, would they choice out, not looking at, like, a change in birth rate? You know, they're kind of voting with their feet. So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You also gotta, you also gotta look at, if you raise taxes in town, how many people are actually gonna come here for nothing? They, they get nothing in return, you know? So.
Later in your school, maybe? Yeah, okay.
And just to be the, the typical cold bucket of water that I can be sometimes, the, the other part of the conversation that has to be factored into all of this thinking is not to lose sight of the OPEB liabilities that the school has, you know, the district has, you know, initially, has fi- finally made an effort to start funding, but that funding is really a rounding error to the liability that grows by a million bucks each year. And that is, you know, I don't care what you call it, it's debt. And it's forty million bucks and growing. So you can't not ignore that. And we'll touch, you know, I'll be pointing out a page in the audit report where, where those real numbers are shown, okay? That's the most important part of that report in the, you know, in the upcoming agenda here. So I reminded Matt of that and, uh.
Okay. That is also a scary big number.
Yes.
Lots of scary big numbers in Millville. Okay, I'm gonna move on to new business unless there's anything else to discuss? Okay. Um, so budget guidance, Peter?
Yep, so I, I gave you all a draft. I got a little tweak in the, you know, I see a typo already. Um, but this is the basic, um, guidance letter that seems to have worked the last couple of years. Um, with some guidelines, the town under Proposition Two and a Half will have roughly one hundred and forty-five grand to allocate amongst the departments and stay within Proposition Two and a Half without doing anything beyond that. And should it not, choose not to use one-time revenues, if you will, um, including free cash, uh, once we do know what that is. Um, so, some things I will point out. I have some recommended increases of salary and wages of various things, union and non-union. I'll circle back to the non-union in a minute, which is on page two. Uh, item three, um, is to talk about the schools. Under, under Millville's bylaws, the town administrator brings to the Board of Selectment a budget that includes all of the departments, including the schools. And so my guidance factors in the schools and in all of my interactions with school leadership, they've been very cooperative in trying to stay within our guidance or work with us. But in this, you'll see in particular, BMR must, and I highlight that, include a material and meaningful contribution to its OPEB liability in its FY twenty-three budget. Um, and, and I would argue, you know, to stay within the, the guidance, that they, they may have to find, find the money somewhere within their budget that they otherwise might wanna use somewhere else. So that's a larger conversation to be had as this process goes on. Um, there are some exceptions of those guidance sort of levels. It's level funding of operating expenses. Um, uh, but, uh, police staffing, you know, I think we we, we have to plan for the impact of police reform on Millville's dependency on part-time officers. That's a longer-term play. In the next two or three years, it's gonna be harder and harder for Millville to cover shifts with part-time officers. It's gonna wind up having to have academy-trained officers. Uh, uh, Chief Coop can talk further about that when needed. The other piece, though, is that we need to factor in that we're gonna probably need to supplement the department uh, to provide for the marijuana retail needs. And I won't get into that in too much detail. But suffice it to say, under our host community agreements for which they pay us a three percent uh, fee of revenue, of re, of revenue, um, it is to mitigate impacts on the community, including, uh, the need for additional police. And this reflects, this comment reflects the fact that there's likely to be needed to add, at the end of the day, an additional full-time officer. Highway, um, where we have ARPA money for a lot of highway-related stuff, stormwater and the remediation of the impact of repairing stormwater drains and so forth, using ARPA funding, but also yet to be received and guidance provided on federal infrastructure. But what I'm told, there's a substantial sum coming to the town of Millville, which means that there's probably less need for highway supply budget line item than Brian would otherwise be asking for if he didn't have these additional resources available. So, um, I, I mentioned that. Board of Health, you know, they have an IMA intermunicipal agreement where they're provided a Board of Health agent, uh, support from this, uh, arrangement they went into, you know, last fall. Um, so it, it's a fairly significant resource that I think could be factored into their budgeting, so I point that out here. Circling back to the first item, we have, we've historically put in a two percent salary and wage increase for non-union departments. A- as you know, uh, we're in a pretty challenging state of inflation. But I'm not gonna suggest we try to match inflation, but I think maybe still living within the guidance and the resources available under Proposition Two and a Half, that line item increase could be upped a little bit to, say, three percent. And I, I, you know, that might help mitigate the difficulties folks have buying hamburger today, uh, at twenty percent higher than it was a year ago. So um, it does relate to FY twenty-three's budget, so it, you know, the fiscal year, who knows what inflation will be like then, but it is, I think, a proactive way to deal with that issue in a reasonable manner. So I point that out.
And that's for non-union departments, right?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. And then for the OPEB, so I see you have that under schools. So and I know that the Finance Committee in the past has recommended us a contribution. So will the school and Millville contribute moving forward, or will it just be the school?
Yeah, so Millville has its own OPEB. It's about five hundred, six hundred thousand. It, we, we put aside a hundred and forty-five thousand to date, you know, there was a big slug that went in when there was fair amount of free cash available. So the town has done a pretty good job of working that down.
Good.
But BMR's nut
Right.
is thirty-eight million, went to thirty-nine. It goes up a million bucks every year. And putting in twenty-five or fifty grand in a budget really doesn't make much of a dent on that, right? So.
It'll make me cry.
That's my point.
Okay. Okay. Todd and Andrew, any other comments on the budget guidance or concerns?
Not at the moment.
Yeah, I'm good right now.
Okay, great. Okay, so six B, consideration of building inspector appointment candidates. So, um, we didn't have a chance to talk.
Yeah, sorry. So I'm gonna put this out, and I'm gonna put the three percent in item one, unless you all have objections.
Nope.
I, I want the process to begin.
I think that's great. Do you want us to vote on you distributing that? Nope.
No need to. I just wanna make sure you had no real objections on this.
Nope. I think it looks really good.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Okay. So building inspector appointment candidate. So at the conclusion of the interviews, we weren't sure if we had really two viable candidates because, um, of Mr. Fitzpatrick's, um, other role. I spoke to Mr. Fitzpatrick's boss and asked him, like, you know, how he managed this, is this something that you think is doable? So he himself is actually, is also a building commissioner for two towns. So he manages two towns. He's like, you know, this is how I do it. It's really, um, not that big of a deal. And I, he said, you know, by, I need him in the office, you know, H four. And I was like, gee, would you let him come in late a day and leave early a day? And he's like, yeah, actually, that would be, be okay. Um, and he can take calls and do work from his desk for Millville, you know, from Atabar and all that other good stuff. So um, I don't know, Andrew and Todd, I gave you his contact information also. I don't know if you spoke with him?
No, I did not.
Okay. Um, so, and then I think it's just time to talk about the two candidates. So I, I made a list of. time to talk about the two candidates, so I, I made a list of pros and cons for each one. So and I have my recommendation that I prefer, but I don't know if Todd or Andrew want to start? Okay, well, I can start. So, um, so let's start with, uh, uh, Lincoln. So the pros I have for Lincoln, he lives in town and I really like that. Like right now, we have our fire chief and police chief that both live in Millville, and I like that a lot. I think it makes the community feel good, that like this is their friends and neighbors and things like that. Um, because Lincoln lives in the community, he knows it well, and I think that's important and helpful. And he's obviously can do the job and is knowledgeable in the building code and things like that. Um, and I, we heard that from his references as well. Um, so for the cons, um, I don't feel that when Lincoln takes responsibility for off-putting people in terms of his customer service, um, I, you know, certainly have gotten issues and you know, he's, he stayed, there was room for improvement, but I didn't really hear anything kind of meaningful, like this is behavior I'm looking to change. Um, and you can't acknowledge what you don't change. What you can't change, what you don't acknowledge, rather. So if you're not going to acknowledge that this is an issue, then we're never going to get improvement, and it's always going to be this way. Um, within the Building Inspector Search Committee, we had an interview, even within the Boris Luthman. He was a bit abrasive at times, and we're the people hiring him and deciding if he gets this role. And so if he's like that with any one of us, I wonder how he's going to be with, you know, Joe Schmo on Main Street. Um, he inappropriately talked about the commute of the other candidate, so he mentioned that the other person lives a little further away. Um, in, when I'm hiring someone, say I was interviewing Andrew and Andrew walked out and Todd walked in and Todd said, hey, you're interviewing that guy, well, this, this and this and this, I would have been like, the interview is over. You don't say anything negative about the other candidate. If you have to make yourself look good by saying something not positive about the other person, that's just a huge turnoff for me. I mean, just don't do that. Um, he doesn't give her any confirmation of what's wrong with the builder home. And I had photos from people where he wrote no on things, and that's not ideal. And I guess the last point is, um, I ran because I didn't think the previous boards were really listening to people and they were doing what's easier for them instead of what people wanted them to do. And I think this is a role that people want to see changed, so. That's kind of my take on Lincoln. And I can, my take on Joe. So. I, this is kind of a pro and a con, so he doesn't live in town, so that's a con, but he's not obscenely far away. It's a twenty-minute drive, so not terrible. Um, he, I like how he talks about, he documents what's wrong with the inspection. And so the co- the contractor and the homeowner both know, hey, this is what you did wrong, this is what needs to be addressed, they'll come back in five, ten, however many days, this is what I'm looking for you to be fixed. Um. I don't have concerns with him being abrasive with Joe Schmo on Main Street. And he's clearly knowledgeable and can, knows what people want, he's knowledgeable and can do the job. And then for a con, I said, as he has another job, it could be difficult to get him when needed. Speaking to his other manager, I don't have that concern, and his other manager did speak very highly of him. And also mentioned that he is going for the building commissioner license, and he's doing that on his own. He's like, he doesn't need to do that to keep his job, he's just doing that because he's ambitious and wants to get better. Anyone else?
I mean, I, I, I would agree with your points. Um, I don't think any of them are wrong. My only concern would be the fact that when we did have a inspector who did this as a part-time extra kind of thing, as he was inspector working as an inspector in another town, things didn't get done and things just didn't really improve at all and kind of got worse. Um, and then my other concern would be how long could we be, would we be able to keep the inspector? I mean, if he's, wants to become an, if, you know, fallout inspector, would his ambition only stop here, or would it be more like a stepping stone? I mean, we've seen that with other positions where people come in just to get the experience and then they move on. I don't necessarily want to have that type of situation come up. Um, but those are all kind of, those are concerns that could or couldn't happen, so I don't know. A little bit on the fence.
No, so I played through that as well, Andrew, so a couple of things. One, this appointment's only through June thirtieth. So we can see how it goes, if it goes, regardless of who's appointed, it goes badly, then we just, you know, that's it, we just don't reappoint them, so we have less than six months. And we also have six months to kind of see if there's another way we want to have the building inspector position. So is this something we want to regionalize, maybe with another town? Like Blackstone recently, their building inspector resigned, for example. And we have, you know, from now until June thirtieth to kind of figure that out. And in the, and also try out, um, someone in the role. Because it's just an annual appointment. So, and then, and our, and we do have the, um, Assistant Building Inspector as well. And I would encourage everyone in town, so it would be over the next six months, if you're engaging with the building inspector and you're like, gee, this didn't work, or this isn't happening, or I couldn't get ahold of him, or this, let us know. Like, please let us know that, because we're you know, don't be shy. Um, I kind of, sometimes I'll be like, oh, you know, we made this change, like, oh, thank God, because I didn't like that at all. I'm like, gee, no one told us, like, no one told us that. And if you had voiced your concerns earlier, we can act on that, and we want to, like, this whole thing kicked off because so many people came forward and said, you know what, I think I'd like to see a change. And that's what we're trying to do, but I need to make sure that, you know, you want this. And I feel pretty comfortable that people want this change, but are there other changes you want? Let us know. You won't hurt my feelings, I'm a good secret keeper. Ask the other, there are many people who came forward and I will not give their names up, I don't care what you do to me, but. So if you're like, hey, I have this idea. And I just say this too, like, I'll meet with anyone in town, you, if you're like, I know she hates me, I will still meet with you. Even if we're not friends, I might want my bodyguard Peter there, because he knows Taekwondo, don't let the, don't let the grandpa look fool you, he's tough. So I might want Peter there, but I, like, I will meet with you, so, anyway, kind of a long-winded answer. So I'm just going to close with, I believe that this is a change that people want to see, and I think we should move forward with Joseph Patrick for the remaining, remainder of the appointment, it's through June thirtieth, we can see how it goes. If it's completely awful, feel free to give me that feedback. Todd, you're quiet, do you have any thoughts?
Oh, I got lots of thoughts. I, I agree with everything.
Community to hear.
I agree with everything you said, I think you did a thorough, you know, investigation of all of this. Um, and yes, I'm on board with making a change.
All right, so. I will make the motion to appoint Joseph Fitzpatrick of Douglas, Massachusetts as the building commissioner in Millville, Massachusetts, and I'm looking for a second.
I will second.
Thank you, Todd. Any further discussion? Alls in favor? Aye.
Aye.
No.
Okay. So I guess in closing, I, um, I will say that, uh, I probably haven't made friends with, um, Mr. Barbara based on this activity. But I do want to thank him for his service to the town. Because I know he's done, he's been working with Millville for a long time, and I apologize that this went on as long as it did. We were hoping to have this wrapped up by October thirty-first. It went two months longer and I wish that didn't happen. Okay. Audit reports, I did read this. Peter. Um. And I had I turned down a couple of pages. So, well, I don't know, why don't you give your pitch first and then we'll answer questions, there are a couple of things you said.
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't have much pitch, you know, it's been up on the website, people have been asking for it. I used to be an auditor, I used to do financial statements, my specialty was not in the, uh, public, uh, sector, although I did have clients like, um, Massport and Boston Redevelopment Authority and some hospitals that did fund accounting, but I hated fund accounting, so I didn't get smart about it. So I, you know, I read this and I have to read it several times, it's very complex, it's, it's meaty, it's, it's hard to understand what they're saying and in the takeaway is, you know, you sort of have, you have two sets of financial statements. There's two sets of books here, one is, you know, uh, and I have to keep referring back to it. One's the governmental funds and one's the governmental activities, you know, and it's like, well, which is which? Well, one's the funds and one's trying to be what's called, uh, you know, accrual basis accounting. And it's the accrual basis which adds in the things like OPEB liabilities and pension liabilities and puts in fixed assets and depreciation expense and that sort of thing. But at the end of the day, you still come away, the, it's hard to understand what you're really reading. And to me, when I look at a municipality's financial statements, the very first place I go is I look to the, you know, the pension and OPEB footnotes to see what's in there. And, and, and I find those very telling, um, about a, a, a community. And Millville's small, so the town itself doesn't have a very large pension liability, I mean, it's significant, but it's not huge. It, it's two and a half million, uh, or the, you know, over two and a half million bucks in a pension liability. Uh, seven hundred, six or seven hundred thousand on the OPEB liability. But the real key is Millville, uh, and you don't really see that in these types like in, back in Sherburne, which also had a regional school system. You know, you didn't get the sense when you read this about how much of the activity in the dependency, or, or reverse dependency was for the school, regional school district. And so if you went to page fifty-eight of the footnotes, which is my favorite page of this whole fif- sixty-five page package, is, uh, they call it note fifteen subsequent events. I wrote that word for word, and the auditors put in the current numbers. And what that shows you is, it talks about the fact that we're part of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District, and they have a variety of debt, unfunded pensions and unfunded, uh, OPEBs. So their long-term debt at Blackstone as of June thirtieth, uh, twenty twenty, was two point seven million, two, two point seven three five million, which is down a little bit from year before, they don't show it, but the year before is three point one million. Big one here, unfunded OPEBs is thirty-three million nine hundred fifty-six thousand. The year before was thirty-two million eight hundred thousand, it went up one point one million. BMR's unfunded pension obligation for their non-teacher union employees is, uh, seven point seven million, it came down from just about eight million the year before, still a big nut, right? And then I always find very interesting, the last paragraph of that footnote, which talks about the debt at the state level for the Blackstone Millville, uh, it's the unfunded pensions for the Blackstone Millville teachers. So the town, the, the region has created debt funded out of your state income tax pocket, if you will, of thirty-nine million for the Blackstone Millville teachers. And on an annual basis, the, out of your state tax pocket comes four point seven million contributed on behalf of those teachers by state taxes. Excuse me, which is an increase of, uh, twenty percent over the year before that contribution. I, I find that just tells you there's a lot of, it's called, it's pay-as-you-go funding of these things, which at some point, somebody's going to pay for that, you know, and I sound like some of these old guys there on, uh, some of these news stations, but this is the kick the can down the road that you're staring at you right in the face. And it's going to catch up with somebody, or somebody's going to be left, uh, musical chairs, they're going to be left standing, so. Don't overlook this stuff, that's, so that's my lecture on what the value of these financial statements are. Uh, I'm sure we would have, could have Bob Brown, the auditor, come in and actually give you a little overview of this at a future meeting. And, and, and probably answer the questions that I may not be able to answer that you might have. Um, and give a good tutorial, and he's also the auditor for the district. So it's a, he's, he's very helpful to the town.
Okay. So. I'm looking at page twenty-one, so this was the post-employment benefits trust.
Yep.
That's just for Millville.
That's correct, and that's as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty, and then the year after, we added a hundred grand to that.
Great, okay.
Yep.
And then on page seventeen?
Yep.
Under expenditures for the debt service principal and interest. Is that debt service the, um?
Septic betterment loans.
Oh, okay.
All right, so we have zero percent interest from Mass Clean Water Trust for monies we borrowed to provide residents with low-interest septic betterment loans, loans to replace or repair their septic systems secured by a lien on their properties, right? And so you, you may have been around, I know Andrew was, the town has, I don't know, six or seven hundred thousand dollars um, that I've been trying to free, some portion, I've been trying to free up an amount of that into free cash, working with the state. I tried very hard last year when we were having challenges with our free cash. In, in years past, at town meeting, the voters voted to fund the operating budget, which included the septic betterment loan debt service in the neighborhood of fifty, forty or fifty grand a year, depending on what year, it goes back about eighteen years, right? In recent years, the town has authorized the appropriation, the voters have appropriated the money for that debt service, not out of the operating budget, but out of the Title V septic betterment loan accounts, which is the appropriate place, but in those earlier years, it wasn't. And as a result, when people were paying off their loans on the septic betterment loans, the individual property owners were paying down their monies they borrowed, the money all went into the Title V bank account and stayed there, because it was never put over and reimbursed the operating fund. So there's a slug of money sitting in there that I couldn't get the powers that be at the state to appreciate uh, the fact that that money, some portion of it should free up. And another way to put it, today, there's, I don't know, six or seven hundred grand in cash. There's three hundred and seventy thousand in loans payable to the town by the property owners, offset by about the same amount payable to the state Water Resources Trust. So if, if we took the cash, paid off all those loans, we'd still have three hundred thousand bucks in cash and we'd have the notes receivable from the property owners. And they still wouldn't say that excess cash was convertible to free cash. So we're still working on that, I've been working with Bob Brown on a best way to approach that. Um, it's not, not actively doing that today, but it's on the radar still. I'm, I'm determined to get money freed out of, you know, sitting in a bank account and put into free cash usable for other things.
Okay.
Okay, so that's a lengthy, complicated.
Is that something, do you think will be successful ever, or?
Yeah, but, uh, not this year, but, uh, you know, I, I think in another year or two. You know, I couldn't get it through, who was, uh, Mary Jane Handy, she's you know, I couldn't get it through, who was, uh, Mary Jane Handy? She's since retired, but she was director of accounts. Nice lady, but she just couldn't understand, couldn't see it. She just wasn't appreciating it. Have a new person there in her place. Haven't gone at her, if you will, on this. It's, it's, it's kind of complicated for them.
Okay, sounds good. I think it would be worthwhile to have this um, gentleman comment, just maybe give us like the Cliff Notes version, because I know that there's a lot of interest from people in Millville on the audits, with people that they ask about it all the time. There's lots of, no social media and things like that. So if he had kind of a like a five slide summary for just, I took accounting classes, but I hate accounting. I just, so if he had a five slide summary that, you know, people who don't like accounting can follow, that would be great.
Yeah. The other thing that they issue, and he hasn't yet, but he's in draft. I don't know why he hasn't issued yet, uh, is a brief management letter. They call it a management letter, which talks about, um, concerns, you know, things, accounting practices of the town that need improvement, if you will. And they've identified a few, most of which relate to, you know, reconciling bank accounts and or reconciling um, revenue accounts, um, which with our new treasurer collector and our new town accountant, I think will, uh, make great headway there.
Okay.
So yeah, I'll invite him to a future meeting.
Yeah.
Yep. He'll be happy to be there.
Great. Andrew and Todd, anything else on the audit?
Nope.
Okay. So the selectmen meeting calendar. I just had it up and then I closed it. Now, here it is. Um, so this looked fine to me. I guess I just want to check for the next couple of meetings because we can be flexible. There's only three of us. So if someone had something come up with school or with work or a family and you can't make a meeting, you know, and you know that now, let us know, because then we can kind of work together or schedule. So the next will be two weeks from tonight because of the Martin Luther King holiday. So we'll have it on Tuesday, the 18th. Any concerns with that meeting right now? Todd or Andrew?
No, that should be fine.
Nothing right now.
Okay, great. Um, and then everything else is just the first Monday, oh, except for February, we, uh, the 22nd. So can, I don't know if you have further enough forward looking into your schedule, but why don't we, Monday, the 7th look okay too?
I'm just pulling it up, um.
Sure.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
Yeah, that should be fine.
All right. So let's, let's look forward to meetings and then but if something comes up, you know, just let us know ahead of time, especially like if I don't hear from you, like I start to worry like a mom and think like something happened and and I get nervous. So, all right. So we'll leave Tuesday, the 18th and Monday, the 7th, and then just the normal schedule as follows as it is for the first month, first and third Mondays, except for there's a holiday or the election. Okay, great. I'm, everyone okay moving on to seven, uh, moving on from the calendar? Um, so seven, A, old business ARPA updates, if any. I don't see Sarah, so I think we're.
Yeah, I delayed Sarah. She's working on, uh, putting a little presentation together. We'll have it for the next meeting. I decided to keep her out at tonight's meeting.
Okay.
We had a lot in the agenda.
Yes, we have a lengthy agenda, although we're making pretty good time. It's like quarter past eight.
Yep.
Um, Tim, anyone on public forum?
Not yet, but if you want to give 30 seconds.
Yeah, we can give it a minute. We can do the selection reports while we're waiting. So Andrew, you're first in my Hollywood squares. So anything from you?
Uh, nope, I have nothing.
Todd?
Nope.
Okay. I just want to say I love seeing everyone's Christmas lights up. Mommy and my kids drove around and saw all the lights on, um, see Orchard Street there, Providence, um, Providence Street had some really pretty lights too, Chestnut Hill Road. So those are kind of the main roads. I didn't really make it down too many side streets, but if you have Christmas lights up, I really enjoyed seeing. Tim, anything?
Nope.
Okay. I'll go, I'll come back to you one more time after Peter's report, after the town minister report from Peter.
Yeah, I don't really have anything at this stage, you know, like I say, we're working on ARPA, uh, trying to make a good understanding of that, then bring to you a better, uh, you know, also a good understanding and make the best use of those funds. Um, most of the talking I've already done, I think. So at this stage I'll stand quiet.
All right, Tim, last chance.
Nothing.
All right. Um, items not reasonably anticipated 48 hours prior to meeting?
I had one item that I sent you an email on, which was, uh, uh, Chief Coop wanted to appoint somebody. Got it in after the agenda had been posted and the clerk was gone. So it was after the four, you know, within this 48 hour period. And what he wants to do is appoint Jeffrey Beckwith as a part-time police officer through June 30th, 22. So that would be, you know, the appointment would be done by you folks. And wha, wha, he, he's described the individual. He previously worked for the Millville Police Department. He's a good candidate, excited to start. He's currently a full-time Framingham firefighter and has the time availability to offer. He's going through the Bridge Academy on his own, which is a key thing for, uh, part-time police officers. So he's just the right kind of candidate and the chief is enthusiastic and hoping to get him up and running as soon as you all, uh, authorize, uh, or appoint him.
Okay. Yep. So I'm gonna get the email. I said he'd like to hire him back. So he's worked in Millville before and he has the time. And then I know that we have um, we would, we would need maybe someone to augment Chief Coop's time as he kind of takes his chief role. So I don't have any concerns of this, but Andrew or Todd, do you have any concerns? Especially since he worked for Millville already and things like that. I feel pretty comfortable.
Yes, I, I don't have any problem, um, with a candidate at all. I would only think, don't think we can vote on him just because he's not on the agenda.
Well, this would be not reasonably anticipated 48 hours since it came in.
Yeah, it was late Thursday afternoon that it came in, which
So then you didn't see it until Monday.
That's right.
Yeah, because that's what I saw. Yeah.
The main problem is, is that if it's not on the agenda, we can't vote on it. We can discuss it, but we can't vote on it.
Even if, so what's the purpose of the 48 hours then?
I'm not sure. Usually I don't remember when it came on, but it came on recently-ish. I'm not really sure what the purpose of it is, except for items not reason, so we can discuss. So if something does come up, I guess we can discuss it, I guess, but can't really vote on it.
Yeah, I don't know that exactly, uh, whether that's a a restriction or not, but you, you know, that's up to you all. Um, I, I, I don't know that there'd be any harm nor foul.
Uh, otherwise.
Comfort level.
Well.
The point, counterpoint would be that, why would be we bother posting an agenda with any items on it if we can vote on anything whenever it comes to our desk? That's the whole point of the posting of 48 hours to let the public know. So everybody's aware of what's happening before we vote on it. Not so we can just slip things through. I mean, we're not slipping it through obviously, but that's the reason why it was done that way.
Yeah. I guess I, so I think that, um, I think the 40 hours and voting on things like that, it's more kind of like emergency stuff, like, I don't know, I'm thinking, you know, of course, like my mind's totally blank right now, but something that was really like, we don't blow on this tonight. It's like, there was going to be some irreparable harm to Millville. And I don't think waiting two weeks would put in any irreparable harm. So let, uh, Chief Coop know that we're going to be on the side of caution. Well, that is an agenda item. Um, I don't anticipate any issues with his appointment. So if he wants to put him on the schedule after you know, when's our next meeting, 18th though, starting the 19th? He can do that. Okay. And then Peter, would you mind asking, uh, counsel, like for the 48? If something comes in like this, can we vote on it and move forward? Just because I want, I want to know that. Okay, thank you. Okay, awesome. So next regular meeting, January 18th, as discussed, signatures. I signed all the meeting minutes and put in the changes we required. So, um, I will make a motion that we enter executive session only to return to open session to adjourn the meeting. Now I move that the board selectmen enter into executive session per Massachusetts general law. C 30A, section 21A to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Teamsters Union, local 170 town of firefighters, town of Millville firefighters unit. I also move that the board selectmen enter into executive session per Massachusetts general law, C 30A, 21A3, to discuss strategy relative to pending litigation to Toma versus Millville, will, where discussion of these matters in open session would have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town. Now move that the board sergeant enter into executive session to comply with or act under authority of any general law, specifically Massachusetts general law 30A, 21FNG, to review assorted executive session minutes. Looking for a second.
Sorry, stuck on mute a second.
Thank you, Todd. Any discussion? Okay, so roll call bell. So Andrew, you're first in my Hollywood square.
Yep, aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Jennifer is aye. Okay, this is the 8:22.